Annual meeting in order. Ariel, would you call the roll, please?
Hal Glanville.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Gary Tellkamp.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Again, a reminder, council, if you have any conflicts of interest, please let the rest of the council know before you vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the April 7th council meeting.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $140,724.38.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $93,635.44.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Communications from the public, do we have anyone here tonight that would like to address the council? All right. Moving on, we have a 7:10 public hearing. So we'll jump over that and go to our first council update. That would be from the Hot Springs Public Library Director, Mary, quarterly update, and 2024 annual report. And before we get started, Mary, once we get to 7:10, I'll just ask you to take a pause. We'll go through our public hearing and then we'll come back to you.
Okay. I might be done before then because this is going to be quick.
Well, we've got lots of questions for you.
All right. All right. So just a couple of updates on the library itself. We are currently at 4,079 patrons, actively using the library every day. As I come in during the days. 2,372 of those are straight from Hot Springs, with about 1,300 of them coming from home in town. The rest kind of scattered out around the local area. We're averaging about 64 new cards being purchased, created every month. So nice turnover every month. We're getting people coming in to renew their cards or get brand-new ones. A lot of people moving into town. Right now, we have about 23,000 titles in our library, including books, audiobooks, DVDs. It's a little bit lower than it was last year, but that's just because we went through a major reading process and got rid of some damaged books, outdated books. And now we'll start replacing them as we get funds for that. Winter Storytime just wrapped up, April 10th. Heather averaged up to 18 kids a week. And these are little kids, these are the preschoolers. So 1 to 6 years old, and they were coming in almost every week to do the arts and crafts and stories. She's done a really good job promoting that. She's switching over to summer reading. It will start June 9th, runs through July 31st. It'll be Wednesdays and Thursdays for kids 1 to 18. We'll have different activities. The theme this year is Color Your World, so a lot of arts and creativity things. She's got arts and crafts planned. We have a puppet show, a magic show. We have communications with Chautauqua Artisans Market. They're going to come up and do some activities with the kids as well. Public Library Institute's been doing really good. Heather and I have been learning a lot. It's a lot of focus on resources that we can use, both from the state library and other places, which is good. It doesn't the troubles state libraries in right now. They give us all kinds of resources we can use to help our patrons. And a lot on generative AI and how much it's actually permeated our whole world and things we didn't really think about, but how we can use it to further help our patrons and work at the library better. And then the summer session of that will be June 3rd and the 4th. It's usually a week long, but with the cuts, they've cut it down to two days. They're going to pack a bunch in there. We don't know for sure right now what will be involved. And then the annual survey was completed. Hopefully, there's not actually a lot of questions. That's it.
Counsel, any questions?
Yeah, Mary. I met with a couple of people that were from the eastern part of the state that went through the library. And I want to tell you how impressed they were with the facility and the person that was working that day, who I don't know who it was, but they were nothing but compliments and kudos to you. And I think we need to give her a shout-out for that.
Thank you. I will definitely pass that on to the staff. They do a great job helping all the people.
Do you have any idea how the National Library funding cuts are going to affect you? Is it going to affect our ebook collective?
Supposedly Libby, which is the ebooks, is a separate entity, and they'll be able to keep that going for us. The interlibrary loan, which a lot of people use to get books that we don't have in the library, but they can get it from other libraries, that's going to face some troubles. We already don't use a curator system, but a lot of libraries do, and that got cut completely. So it's going to depend on whether those libraries will be able to continue it, as to whether we'll be able to continue. Hopefully, we'll be able to. That's a big one for our patrons. Libby's a big one for the patrons. The institute that Heather and I are doing that gives us accreditation, those librarians, that's getting cut. Don't know that they'll have anything left for training purposes, so that's a bad one. But funding-wise, we don't really get anything from the state library. It's more the resources they give us. They have access to the databases. We can't afford to have the databases, but there are a couple of free ones that they did explain to us that we'll be able to get our patrons. That's where you can access different books, articles, research, things like that. We should be okay.
Fingers crossed.
Yes.
I got a question for you here. And it's one statement that says that you've done a lot of extreme weeding. As many as books in bad condition, are they salvageable? And if there's any that's salvageable, what do you do with them?
If they're not in horrible condition, we will give them to the book barn, and then they do the sales, depending on what they are, some of their references. They'll take them, sell them, and then that money is actually used to help us at the library as well. So nothing is just disappeared unless it's in falling apart conditions, and we don't spend the resources to fix it. But everything else goes to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Got a few here. Let me find my highlights. They're not gotcha questions, they're too dumb to understand questions. Under the total live programs, talk about synchronous programs and attendance for the synchronous programs. What is a synchronous program?
Synchronous is the fact that we have the kids there at the time we're teaching it. The opposite would be if we had a program we could put online that you could watch at any time. That's the opposite. So ours is all in-house. When we teach it, the kids are there. That's what we count.
Thank you. What is a reconsideration policy?
If someone comes to us and says, "You can't have this book in here for X reason," we have a form they have to fill out, explain why they don't like that book, why they think it's not appropriate for the library. That form goes to the board, and they will discuss whether it really is something we shouldn't have in the library or not, and then they determine whether we keep it or give it away.
Okay. JR just reminded me that we're at 7:10 for our public hearing. So I've got a few more highlighted. So again, we'll just ask you to take a seat, and we'll get into our public hearing, and then we'll get back to you. All right, so we're at 7:10. I'd like to open up a public hearing. Hearing on the proposed amendment to Title 15 Land Usage, Chapter 155 Zoning Ordinance, 155.058 Cannabis Dispensaries. And before we get into much discussion on this, in your packet, council, you'll be asked to vote on Ordinance 1263 later on in the agenda. I draw your attention to item E in that ordinance, where it's talking about the hours of operation. If you remember, this, there were some changes to this ordinance that spoke to hours of operation initially and manufacturing and cultivation. So there was language in this ordinance for both of those. Manufacturing and cultivation did not get approved, so we don't have anything on our ordinances that allows manufacturing and cultivation. So when we made the change, item E, we identified the operating hours, which are from 8:00 to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, or Monday through Sunday. But we neglected to remove that last sentence. Hours of operation for manufacturing and cultivation are not restricted. A number of you have caught that in this particular ordinance and asked what we're going to do about that. We've had conversations since Thursday, talked with the attorneys, talked with Ariel, talked with Jaclyn about removing that language. Should it stay? How would that be addressed? And I think we've landed on, and talking with our attorney prior to the meeting, landed on going ahead and removing that sentence. The concern with removing anything is that because this deals with zoning, that there needs to be an opportunity for the public to comment on whether they agree with removing anything? There would typically be a hearing at P&amp;Z and then a hearing in front of council. Austin, if you could just give us your thoughts on what you and I discussed prior to the meeting and your feeling on, are we at risk for removing this without having another hearing?
Short answer, no. This is not a substantial operation because the sentence wasn't oversight, because there's no manufacturing cultivation on ordinances. This is not necessary. I just caused confusion. So I recommend striking that last sentence and then have the first reading tonight, and then the second reading if it passes at the next meeting.
Okay. After you and I had talked in your office, I talked with Ariel and Jaclyn about removing the sentence. We had talked about the fact that if it stays in, there is no significant effect to it. Isn't anything to implement. So having it stay wouldn't be that big a thing. Jaclyn had pointed out that there is going to be a hearing in front of P&amp;Z. What date, Jaclyn?
May 21st.
Okay. So this could be added to that May 21st hearing to be removed at that time? It seems that it's cleanest to just go ahead and remove it tonight, as long as we're not putting the city at any kind of risk in how we manage it?
No, I don't see the need for it to go in front of P&amp;Z again. So if we want to, the council wishes to, people that are trying to have a first reading, rather do have it in front of P&amp;Z again. That option is one. I'm saying if you do either in the hearing or expedience, see, I'll just go ahead and do the first reading.
And the benefit to striking the language tonight or leaving it in, either way, is that the important part of this is that council does want to approve the change in operating hours for cannabis dispensaries to 8:00 in the morning to 8:00 at night, Monday through Sunday. So either way, that would happen. But removing the language tonight, then this wouldn't need to be back in front of P&amp;Z for their consideration. All right. Jaclyn, Ariel, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so.
All right. Okay, so before we get to council's questions on it, is there anybody from the public that would like to address this? It's a public hearing. Mary? Council, do you have any questions? Any comments? Does it answer those individuals that had identified this was here? Does it answer your questions about it? Speak up now. So then, when we get to the actual agenda item, the motion would need to be to approve the ordinance with the exclusion of removing the hours of operation for manufacturing and cultivation are not restricted. Again, anyone else from the public that would like to address this? All right. Let's go ahead and close the public hearing at 7:16. Mary? All right, my last highlighted one, Larry's already asked as far as extreme weeding, and you've answered why you addressed that. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you for your update, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Thanks for all you do. We continue to receive praise about our library. So be sure and thank yourself and your staff for us.
I will do that. Thank you.
Our next council update is from Preston Gable, Business Improvement District Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Public, can you hear? No. Karaoke night.
Just got to put it up right next to your mouth. Lift it up higher.
Is this good?
Carl.
Carl. It's pretty good.
No idea. There it goes. All right. So my name is Preston Gable. I am the chair for the bid board. And this year's bid budget is $86,020. $65,000 of that is going towards the co-op program with Visit South Dakota, and that funds are matched dollar-for-dollar. This allows Hot Springs to be in Tier 2, which enables us to target an additional audience, more impressions, and do traditional marketing efforts with TV and print in addition to our digital marketing that we've done in the past. Being in Tier 2 will help get the Hot Springs message to a broader range of potential visitors. The main attractions that Tier 2 is focused on are Evans Plunge, Southern Hills Golf Course, Moccasin Springs, and then the Mammoth Site. The ad also shows the areas downtown, the VA, and then the wildlife that you can see at Wind Cave and things like that. $10,000 of that budget goes to help the city put on the fireworks show. As you guys know, the costs have risen quite a bit over the last few years. And the remainder of the budget, which is nearly $11,000, supports co-op ads with the Chamber of Commerce doing a billboard, the South Dakota Vacation Guide, and the Southern Hills Vacation Guide. And when I spoke with Misty, she wanted me to give you guys some facts about tourism and the impact that it has on the state and then the county. And so according to data we received from Visit South Dakota, 2024 tourism had a direct spending of over $8 billion and a total impact of over $8 billion to the state's economy. Because of tourism, residents pay $1,105 less in state and local taxes, and tourism generates 17% of all sales tax collected by the state. Every $1 spent to market tourism generates $3 in tax revenue. In 2024, visitor spending in the Black Hills region equaled $1.96 billion, with a majority of that in Pennington and Lawrence Counties. Fall River visitors spent $39.4 million, and that spending generated over $3 million in state and local tax revenue. As tourism in Fall River equated for 537 jobs, which is 13% of the local county employment, and provides over $16.2 million in labor income. And then a final thing to note is that the bid is looking to change its bylaws to meeting at least twice a year, with the ability to meet more often as needed. And currently, the bid bylaws says that we meet quarterly. But once the budget is set, there's not really much more to discuss. Any type of advertising performance that we get, we just send that out as an email to Misty and to the rest of the board.
Appreciate the information. It's a lot of detail that I personally didn't have in the past, so thank you.
Anyone else?
Could we get a copy of that report?
Yes.
Anytime. It's not necessarily tonight, but.
I got a whole pile of reports here if you want.
I'll scan it in and send it out.
This will work, thank you.
So in the numbers that you look at, Preston, does it show if there was an impact, a significant impact from the road reconstruction over the last three years? There's that concern of, did tourists go around Hot Springs because they didn't want to deal with our construction?
Speaking just for Mammoth Site numbers, our numbers were very steady. The only big drop that we saw was COVID. However, we're not downtown, so we're directly affected by the roadworks. We still were somewhat hit, but again, nobody really cares because everywhere they go in the hills there's roadworks. The businesses that got hurt have been the downtown businesses that didn't have the easier access to it. Tourism-wise, people were still coming to the Black Hills and therefore coming down to see the Hot Springs community.
All right.
The average visitor time was probably a little bit less, if I remember correctly from the numbers when I looked a couple of years ago.
Do you have any information or sway? I've heard that Google Maps or whatnot shifts people around us. Do you know anything about that, or is there any way to get that adjusted or changed?
My understanding of the way Google Maps works is it's based on feedback from the drivers that are using Google Maps. Probably once a year, either Google Maps or Apple puts our visitor parking lot into our employee parking lot behind the building off Detroit. So we put up a large sign that says, "Sorry to give a little stray. Please, you're here, you need to be there." I haven't seen any real indicator of Google Maps taking Hot Springs off the map and showing it. It kind of depends on what their travel is. If they're putting in, directly putting Mount Rushmore or Crazy Horse Memorial in, they're going to take them, if they're coming from less, they're going to take them straight through to Custer.
Right.
They won't make that right turn. If they're coming in from Nebraska, you're going to take the highway all the way up and then turn at Hermosa. So it kind of depends on what their destination is when they put it into the maps, on where that's going to take them.
I've heard it was directing people across 711 Road, even.
When the construction was happening, I believe that was the case because it was getting told that the roads were closed through downtown, and that was why that 711 got put up there. And I think it was for a very short time because people started reporting it, and then they reopened it back up. So it's based more slightly on drivers and then what they're reporting. If you're in a city with it on, it'll say, "Speed trap ahead," or "Accident," and things like that. And when it's, people stop reporting it, and that disappears. So as long as people were reporting that downtown was open for drive-throughs, then it was fine.
Thank you, Preston.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sue Ganji, 2025 Special Assessment Update. Welcome.
Thank you. I hope that this works. Okay, so I just needed to come and give you guys an update of what happened with our tax billing this year. We had the Boulder Falls Assessment, Street Improvement 2016-1. And in our office, we number it, Number 2131. For 23, pay 24. That year's assessment installment was created as one entire assessment. For 24, pay 25. We created the 10-year assessment installment, your principal and the interest. And then our software this year required that we create it into two projects, which we did do that. Two projects is the portion that's in the City of Hot Springs, taxing District 6, and the other portion is what's in your rural service district, taxing District 61. So we named both projects our 2131. It wasn't until after that we understood that their software to load, upload, our software program didn't allow for two projects with the same name. So we uploaded our taxing District 61 first, and then we did taxing District 6. So what we found out afterwards is that the first upload is what made it onto the tax bills, which means that taxing District 6 did not make it on the tax bills. Other issues that we had was for the 26th Street, District 2020-4, the Martin Street Sewer District, 21-13, and Martin Street Water Improvement District. There was an error in the calculations of the 10-year payment schedule. And this was due to a misunderstanding on how we create those 10-year installments. We went with new software two years ago. So what really happened is one installment, we were all, I think, on installment number seven, that installment, rather than if their total assessment was $10,000, it broke it into 10 payments of $1,000 plus interest. What we calculated out and what ended up going out is taking this year's installment and dividing that by 10. So obviously, that was way under assessed for that one. We've determined that we can't, we could not send out any revised tax notice. First time somebody gets it in their hands, that's what it is. So right now, we are filing a claim with our software provider. They did note that, they apologized for the error, so they'll get it fixed for next year. The other three assessments, county's not going to leave you guys dry on that one. We underassess that one, so we'll be working on that one there. Second page I have is the recap on all the specials this year. On the Boulder Falls, obviously the biggest one, taxing District 61 did get on the tax bills. That was a total of $17,848, which included your city and entities. Boulder Falls, $56,586.35, did not get uploaded to the tax notice. On our 26th Water Street District, those six assessments, the total, what was uploaded to the tax notices was a total of $403.19. Rather than the portion that was not uploaded was the $8,181.34. Martin Street Sewer District, 21-13, what was uploaded was $233.91. What should have been, and did not get uploaded, was $2,105.17. And the last one was the Martin Street Water District, 2021-13. One assessment, what got levied on the notice was $2,81.76. What did not get uploaded is just $2,005.35. So we need to let you know this, but particularly on the, all of them excluding the Boulder Falls, county will be working with getting that paid to you guys as a city, since it was our fault now. And we are going to still pursue talking with our software programmer for the Boulder Falls, so we will keep you posted on that. Any questions?
So we're short about $69,000, is that right?
I think about right, yes.
Don't you love computers?
I do not. At least not right now.
Supposed to make our life easier?
Yeah. We've used the same programming for years, but, you know, apparently things happen, so... But we're not going to leave you hanging out there and dry and whatnot, so we'll be getting back with you on that.
Thanks for all your hard work, Sue.
Thank you, Bill.
We've been talking for a long time on this, so I appreciate it.
We have, I really... You were the one that notified me of that back when it happened, and you just hadn't seen that it was not on there, so I appreciate that. But we will get back to you. On that note, before I leave, if you have no other questions, I do want to thank you for sending Deb to our consolidated board today. We went through, there's not much things these, the board members can do, but you guys did a super job, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Sue? I do have some questions. On the first page, I highlighted something on the last paragraph that I believe you restated it when you were talking about the amount still due to the city. So I want to ask the last sentence of the last paragraph on the first page. The county may be paying the City of Hot Springs the balance?
Unfortunately, after I read this, which is why I said it correctly, but this said "may," but we will be making you guys whole again.
Okay. And question Gary asked, is it $68,000, $69,000?
Yeah.
So is that money that's due yet this year? Or is that for the next tax year?
No, this would be for this year's installments.
Okay. And do you have any idea when the city might expect that? Should expect it?
I've talked to the commissioners, and I'm hoping we'll have at least the Martin Streets and the 26th, hopefully on our next agenda.
Okay.
I'm not going to have Boulder Falls until we have time to go and work with them, see what we can do.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dustin. Dustin Kleinsauer, update on Tom and Ann McCully Vision Fund. Welcome.
Hello, thanks for having me. A few new faces since I presented a year, well, it's probably been about a year ago now. Some, a little background, the McCully's Vision Fund was created by Tom and Ann McCully. They were lifelong residents of Hot Springs. And their goal was to create a fund that would help communities, help groups, fund projects within the Hot Springs that would help improve the community and benefit the community. With that being said, this is our third year, and I just want to publicly thank the committee. Our third year into this, it seemed like we had some scheduling issues this year, more than others, for some, everyone has a daily life too. So we ran into a few issues, but we got together. We had three applicants this year, all very worthy applicants. But as a committee, we reviewed it and vetted the applications, and we are happy to announce that we are awarding, it's Christmas in the Hills with the Light Up Our Town project. They requested $2,000 to help, and I'll just read what they're going to use the money for. I guess this was a three-year project, a three-phase project. In '15 and '16, Phase 1 was accomplished. '16 and '17, Phase 2 was accomplished. And then the construction downtown kind of deterred Phase 3 for a while. They, well, looking at Phase 3, they want to continue all the accomplishments of Phase 1 and 2, purchase and install 30 additional 3-foot snowflakes to be placed on lampposts, purchase lighted garland to be wrapped on all-new lampposts from Evans Plunge to Lynn's Dakota Mart, purchase 26 additional snowflakes and special fasteners for the suspended sidewalk, and purchase winter welcome to Hot Springs, Christmas in the Hills, and business-sponsored banners on all 52 new light poles. As a committee, we just felt this met Tom and Ann's wishes in to better, to improve the community and the people that visit it. So, and it can be used year after year for decorations, so... Any questions?
For the public's benefit, I'd just like to point out that Tom and Ann, in their endowment and setting up this fund, they made it very clear that none of the money was to be used for any projects or whatever that the city should be responsible for. I appreciate that they did that. And as a city, we do our level best to stay out of it. You folks have got a good handle on how to manage this process, and you put your heart and soul into it, and I really appreciate that. And thank you, JR, for being a part of it. But again, anything that the city should be doing, Tom and Ann McCully funds cannot be used for that. And I appreciate that they took that approach. Thank you for spearheading it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So that brings us to personnel actions. Going to get a motion to approve personnel actions A through F.
I make a motion to approve personnel actions A through F.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. So we'll move on to our first ordinance. Can I get a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1263 with the amendment that we had talked about in our public hearing?
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1263 and ordinance revising Title 15 Land Use, Chapter 155 Zoning, 155.058, Cannabis Dispensary striking in Item E, hours of operation for manufacturing and cultivation are not restricted.
Second. Which one did you take, Ariel? Linda?
Oh, Deb.
Deb. Deb, I'm sorry. Okay, discussion. Ariel, would you call the roll, please?
Larry Pratt?
Yes.
Gary Tellkamp?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Hal Glenville?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Travis Orbach?
Yes. The motion passes. On to our second ordinance. Going to get a motion to read or to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1264.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance 1264 and ordinance revising Title 11 Business Regulations, Chapter 116 Cannabis Establishments, Paragraphs 116.04 through 116.08 and 116.14.
Second.
Discussion. Ariel, would you call the roll, please?
Gary Tellkamp?
Yes.
Linda Varvel?
Yes.
Hal Glenville?
Yes.
JR Huddleston?
Yes.
Deborah Johnston?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Travis Orbach?
Yes.
Larry Pratt?
Yes. The motion passes. On to our new business. Going to get a motion to approve new business, Item A. Approve and accept 2024 Annual Survey of the South Dakota Public Library.
I make a motion to approve and accept the 2024 Annual Survey of South Dakota Public Library as presented by library director and approved by library board.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. New business, Item B. Can I get a motion to approve the requested tax abatements as submitted by the County of Fall River Director of Equalization?
Make a motion to approve the requested tax abatements as submitted by the County of Fall River Director of Equalization, Matthew D. and Kathleen Steffen, $1,881.74. City of Hot Springs, $2.37. Harold L. and Shirley M. Green, $1,395.13. Gina S. King, $78.13. Jonathan Grant and Justin C. Lebar, $1,266.88.
Second.
Discussion. Deborah, do you have anything to add on this?
Nope. Why? After my day, I'll give anyone anything at this point.
All right.
Don't forget, Deb, you're next.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion to approve new business, Item C. Renew the following 2025 through 2026 malt beverage licenses?
I make a motion to renew the following 2025-2026 malt beverages licenses. American Legion Post 71, Big Bats LLC, Big Time Pizza, Black Hills Pizza Hut, CS Inc., doing business as Winter Circle, Dakota Mart Inc., doing business as Dakota Mart Convenience, Dolgren Midwest LLC, doing business Dollar General Store #18181, Family Dollar Stores of South Dakota LLC, #27126, Frog Projects LLC, doing business as The Space, Good Karma Couture LLC, doing business as Morning Sunshine, HSP Loft Properties LLC, MG Oil Company, doing business as Corner Pantry, #11A and 11B, Misty River Tavern LLC, Moccasin Springs LLC, doing business as The Dragonfly, Southern Hills Golf Course, Springs Hotel LLC, doing business as The Springs Coffee Kiosk, Springs Steakhouse, Stanwell LLC, doing business as Art House.
Second.
Thank you for that.
Good job.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, Item D. Set a public hearing on May 5, 2025, at 7:15 p.m.
I make a motion to set a public hearing on 5/5/2025 at 7:15 p.m. on the special sale alcoholic beverage license applications from Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for the Chamber Wine Walk events to be held on May 23, 2025, from 4:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. at the following locations: The Hot Springs Maker Market, 108 South Chicago Street; Changing Seasons, 323 South Chicago Street; Second Chances, 321 North River Street; Chautauqua Artisans Market, 501 North River Street; Scoby Kombucha, 713 North River Street; Polish Salon and Spa, 401 North River Street.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion to approve new business, Item E. A correction from the April 7, 2025 Agenda.
I make a motion to approve the correction from 4/7/25 Agenda. Reappoint Brian Crawford to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term of 2025 through 2027.
Second.
Discussion. So on the last council meeting, I asked you to approve Brian Powers to the Historic Preservation Commission. Confuse the two individuals, so this is correcting that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion to approve new business, Item F. Accept a resignation of John Gregory.
Make a motion to accept the resignation of John Gregory, term 6/22 to 6/2025, from the Library Board, effective 4/15/25.
Second.
Discussion. So in your packet, counsel, was John's resignation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, Item G. Appoint Penny... I'm going to butcher this.
Svenkensen.
What Deborah said to the Library Board.
I make a motion to approve Penny Svenkensen to the Library Board, effective 4/22/25, to complete the term vacated by John Gregory through June of 2025.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, Item H. Approve an automatic budget supplement of $9,600 to the Additional Sales Tax Fund.
Make a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of $9,600 to the Additional Sales Tax Fund Services and Fees, for the 80% reimbursement of the Minnetoka Bridge Historic Resource Assessment. Required for the future replacement of the bridge, revenue received from the BIG grant funding, PCN #09H3.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. On to new business, Item I. Going to get a motion to approve a travel training request from the Building Official, Wesley Foss.
I make a motion to approve the travel training request from Building Official Wesley Foss to attend the South Dakota Municipal League Code Enforcement Training to be held in Pierre, South Dakota, on 5/7 through 5/8, 2025.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, Item J. A travel training request from Library Director Mary Torones and Librarians Heather Lee, Nicole Clark, Cassie Garner, and Laura Blue.
Make a motion to approve travel training request from Library Director Mary Torones and Librarians Heather Lee, Nicole Clark, Cassie Garner, and Laura Blue to attend the Black Hills Library's mini-conference to be held in Rapid City on April 28 of '25.
Second.
Larry?
Nope.
Bill? Bill?
Bill.
I apologize. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, Item K. Travel training request from Southern Hills Golf Course Maintenance Technician Jay Miller.
I make a motion to approve the travel training request from Southern Hills Golf Course Maintenance Technician Jay Miller to travel to and from Emerald Sod Farm at 31581 East 128th Avenue, Commerce City, Colorado, to pick up low-mo sod order, not available locally, in order to save approximately $2,000 in shipping costs.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion for new business, Item L.
Make a motion to approve a travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton to attend the May South Dakota Municipal League Board Meeting to be held in Wall, South Dakota, on 5/29 through 5, or N/5/31/25.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Going to get a motion to approve new business, Item M. A travel training request from Assistant Finance Officer Ariel Allison.
Make a motion to approve travel training requests from Assistant Finance Officer Ariel Allison to attend South Dakota Municipal League Finance Officer and Human Resource School to be held in Pierre, South Dakota, on 6/10 through 6/13, 2025.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, that's my favorite.
Going to get a new mission...a motion to approve new business item N. A travel training request from City Administrator Jacqueline Kelsey.
I make a motion to approve travel training requests for the City Administrator Jacqueline Kelsey to attend the SDML Human Resource School to be held in Pierce, South Dakota, on June tenth and June eleventh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And can I get a motion for our last new business, item O. A travel training request for Police Officer Kenneth Ayers.
I make a motion to approve the travel training request for Police Officer Kenneth Ayers to attend the South Dakota Narcotics Officer Conference in Deadwood, South Dakota, on April thirtieth through May second, 2025.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Onto our committee reports. First committee report, Administrative and Finance, JR.
Admin and Finance met on April fourteenth at one o'clock here in the Mueller Civic Center. Participants are Mayor Bob Nelson, Alderman Gary Tellkamp, Administrative Assistant Amber Brandstetter, City Administrator Jacqueline Kelsey, Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton, and Chair JR Huddleston. Old business, number one, PPE clothing. Jacqueline will review existing and, if needed, provide updates to the existing policy. Recommending city provide all pre-designated PPE items and remove individual clothing allowances, except in the PD. City will provide a limited number of logoed shirts and sweatshirts and will order all boots from a similar vendor with a limit of two hundred dollars a year spent. Will continue with quarterly check-ins. Number two, longstanding event holder calendar reservations for city parks. A list of longstanding event holders has been created using historical data. They are identified as those with five consecutive years or more of use and provided a placeholder for the event dates each year. Any discrepancies between preferred dates must be worked out between the event holders themselves. A resolution will be drafted and presented to the council at a future meeting. New business, number one, mayor items, none. Number two, committee member items. Jacqueline is working on facilities use agreement between city and school for shared use. Item number three, review monthly finance reports. City audit is going extremely well, expecting the readout report to occur at the second meeting in May. Misty will be absent for Tuesday's council meeting. The Assistant Finance Officer will be present. Ward one election has the following three candidates: Hal Glanville, Craig Romi, and Randy Graham will be appointing for Ward two. Number four, review and discuss ordinance revisions pending. Misty has a list of ordinances identified by various committees and work groups as needing revised. Looking for a more efficient review process and timely readings, as certain ordinances require public hearings, as well as it would be beneficial to combine these if possible. Misty and Jacqueline are working on setting up dates for P&amp;Z and council hearings and revision drafts. Number five, discuss public works recommendation to waive late fees for delinquent utility bill customer and amend ordinance. No recommendations made from this committee. Other items discussed. First, VHE bill reviewed with the new streetlights and suspended sidewalk tower. Estimated additional cost annually for tower energy use is thirty-two thousand. We are unable to estimate the energy savings related to the new light poles as they are combined with other streetlights. Working on a team picture to recognize Go Orange Day on April twenty-third, which is an annual event observed during National Work Zone Awareness Week and used to demonstrate support for roadway safety and to honor highway construction workers. The Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce has funded welcome banners to be displayed on the streetlights throughout town, and the design was shared, which on one side displays the Chamber logo, on the other side, City of Hot Springs. These will be fully funded by the Chamber of Commerce. We adjourned at two forty-five P.M. Our next meeting is May twelfth, one P.M. at the Mueller Civic Center, subject to your questions.
Any questions, council? Thank you, JR. Airport advisory, Gary?
Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, April tenth, at eight-thirty A.M. at the Hot Springs Municipal Airport. Members present were Shane Miller, Mark Bucksmann, and Michael Bogner. Employees present were Airport Manager Ivan Venner, City Administrator Jacqueline Kelsey, Public Works Engineer Utilities Director Tracy Bastian, KLJ Charlie Baker. Elected officials was Alderman Gary Tellkamp, Alderman William Lukens, Mayor Bob Nelson. Airport tenants was Ray Campbell of Southern Hills Aviation. Members of the public were Domeek Genetel, Bill Jones, and Colton Kelsey. The agenda was approved as written. Communications from public, Dominic Genetel and Bill Jones are planning paraglider activities for July sixteenth through the twentieth of this year and were seeking approval for those activities. They will dry dock camp, do some flying activities from the airport, and travel by vehicle over to Devil's Tower for additional flying activities. Hot Springs will be the base for these activities. They're anticipating twenty to thirty participants from South Dakota, Wyoming, Colorado. Committee welcomed their gathering and thanked them for choosing Hot Springs. The paraglider group will also fly at the balloon festival as requested of the four to six pilots. They will coordinate with the balloon festival organizers and the Chamber of Commerce. Airport manager updates. Monthly fuel sales is one thousand forty-nine gallons sold in March, representing forty-one track actions for six thousand two hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-six cents. Estimated flight operations from March were sixty. There was three balloon launches and zero landings. Ivan is trimming trees that are encroaching on the flight path for runway nineteen, and I understand that he got that completed today. Ivan has replaced the blade on the snowplow with a rubber carbon material, which should extend the surface life of the runway. There are no observations made for improvements at the airport at this time. Old business, the AWAS III is moving forward and everything's on schedule. Charlie Baker remains optimistic that the federal funding will come through. New business, continuing discussion of balloon festival set for August twenty-second through the twenty-fourth and participation of airport community. Shane Miller at the Lions Club had reached out to him in regards to serving food at the airport balloon festivities, and he referred them to the Chamber of Commerce. Discussion of the continuing drainage issues on west elevation of the new tea hangars and how we're going to go about...going to approach getting this resolved. And Ivan is going to go through the city tea hangars and make certain the doors are all operating without issue. Next meeting is set for Thursday, May first, 2025, eight-thirty A.M., and we adjourned at nine-nineteen. Any questions?
Thank you, Gary. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management, Travis?
The Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District Board members will next meet on Thursday, May eighth, 2025, seven o'clock here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Historic Preservation, Deborah?
Historic Preservation will meet next May seventh, Wednesday, five P.M. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Evans Plunge Advisory, Linda?
Okay. The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met April tenth, 2025, at noon. Those present were Carrie Moloch, Lily Broyles, Gabby Martin, Tom Nas, Mara Smith, Jacqueline Kelsey, City Administrator, and Linda Varvel. Updates on operations, the closure for cleaning went well with most tasks being completed. We also got the front exterior facade scraped and painted, along with power washing the ladies locker room floor. We have a spring membership going on, and on April nineteenth, they will be hosting an Easter egg hunt from ten A.M. to three P.M. We will be closed April twentieth for the Easter holiday. In May, we will be having a special on youth punch cards. We are still short of lifeguards. We are looking at opening the outdoor pool Memorial Day weekend. We have two applicants to interview for Aquatics Director. On equipment, we have a treadmill that needs replaced, also need to repair a hot tub leak. We have power washed the outdoor pool and looking at applying a coat of paint. There are some new roof leaks that may be under warranty. Tracy has some new numbers for the front entryway. We will see how the season goes with the double doors that need replaced. Swim lessons, we are looking at two rounds of lessons, June second through twelfth and June sixteenth through twenty-sixth, Monday through Thursday, eight A.M. to ten A.M. For levels one and up, with forty students enrolled since registration started April fifth. The fitness area minutes will be consolidated with the equipment. Monthly review of incidents, there was nothing to report. There were no public comments. We adjourned at twelve-twenty-eight P.M. The next meeting will be May eighth, twenty...I put twenty-twenty-eight. Nope, 2025, at noon at the Evans Plunge. All are welcome. Any questions?
Yeah, Linda, could you give me those swimming lesson dates again?
Okay, let me see. All right, all right. June second through twelfth and June sixteenth through twenty-sixth, Monday through Thursday, eight A.M. to ten A.M.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
Thank you, Linda. Parks Recreation, Larry, Linda?
Next meeting will be May seventh, two P.M. here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you. Planning and zoning, Deborah?
Planning and zoning met April sixteenth, six P.M. at City Hall. Present were Donald Stead, Christine Heidebrink, Joni Hill, and Jason Heidebrink. Also, staff present was myself, Wesley Foss, and Jacqueline Kelsey. Guests present were Kara Hagan. Minutes from March nineteenth were approved. Under new business, number one, the Almond Elm Street Edgewood Terrace, vacation of Edgewood Terrace to Dr. LaSour Villa Teresa property. Concerns were presented regarding the ownership of the vacated portion of Almond Street, Elm Street, and Edgewood Terrace where they intersect. The issue came to light following necessary access to repair public utilities. There was a water break in that area, private one. The commission determined that regardless of vacation portion, the vacated portion, which this vacation was done like in the fifties, utility easement remains intact if it was not formally removed, and we couldn't find any thing that was presented where that was removed. Any other ownership issues do not involve planning and zoning at this time. Number two, a review, future planning and cleanup of lot boundaries for Moccasin Springs LLC and Minnetoka Vale Investments LLC. Kara Hagan presented proposed lot line revisions for several lots owned by Moccasin Springs LLC and Minnetoka Vale Investments LLC. The requests would make the lots more usable for future use and development. There was also a question of possibly acquiring two small properties owned by the cities that adjoin Moccasin Vale Incorporated LLC and are not buildable. Jacqueline will research a potential sale further to provide more information. Completing all of the requested revisions will require several phases or actions, and it was recommended that she present a site plan, developer's agreement, and exhibits to get started. A PUD may also be a consideration. Number three, Lot Three R and Lot Twenty-five R of the replat of Valley View. This is just past Taco John's and kind of tucked back behind the new restaurant that's out there just over the city limits on Fall River Road. A plat review, lot line revision request for Lot Three R and Lot Twenty-five R owned by Wally Cotro was presented. A new exhibit needs to be presented for approval. He wants to just take out a lot line that's in the center of the whole thing and join it up. Number four, set public hearing for revision of city ordinance chapters one fifty-four and one fifty-five. Jacqueline presented the proposed changes for city ordinance chapters one fifty-four and one fifty-five. A public hearing was requested for chapter one fifty-four at six-ten P.M. and chapters one fifty-five at six-fifteen P.M. at the next meeting to be held on Wednesday, May twenty-first, at six P.M. Under old business, review of the zoning map. It was requested that a more definite review of the zoning map be conducted so that language in city ordinance could be revised to refer a current...to reference a current zoning map as opposed to the existing language that indicates it was last updated in 2015. Number two, sweat property, that issue is tabled for now. Number three, Fall River Herald Care NU Letter. A letter was sent March thirty-first requesting them to formally declare their use for the property within thirty days of the receipt of the letter. No formal response regarding use has been received at this time. It was recommended that we wait another thirty days for scheduling a public hearing. This is the land just past the ambulance that we have just recently annexed. We need to get a proper way to say what it's going to be zoned as for the use of it. And discussion, the P&amp;Z meetings start time, summer hours, the current meeting time at six P.M. will remain as is. It was adjourned at eight-oh-five P.M. The next meeting will be May twenty-first, six P.M. at the City Hall.
Deborah, in your report, did you say M-U?
It said NU.
NU?
NU Letter.
No use district.
No use district, okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think you also said Fall River Herald and it's Fall River Health.
Oh, it is. Sorry.
I just wanted to clear that up.
Let me reread that whole one back. Yeah, right now, presently, it is zoned as non-use, no use.
Yes, a no use district.
So, it needs to be...have a better clarification of what is going to be used, and that's still in the planning stages.
I thought the hospital, we talked about that at the last council meeting, I thought it had been resolved. I guess not.
What we had talked about was having the conversation with Fall River Health, have they decided, are they ready to go forward with what we understood would be a planned unit development?
Right.
And they're not there yet, but our ordinances say that we have to move that out of a no use into some other district no later than a year. We're just trying to stay ahead of things and not find out we're thirteen months down the road and we haven't given it a new...new use.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Deborah? Thank you. Safety, Bill, JR?
Safety Committee will meet Thursday, May first, one P.M. at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Public Works, Bill, Al?
Public Works will meet Tuesday, April twenty-ninth, one P.M. at the Mueller Center Conference Room.
Thank you. Southern Hills Golf Advisory. The Southern Hills Golf Advisory met on April fourteenth. Clubhouse Manager Jill Low, course...golf course superintendent Jason Happy, committee members Colette Miller, Greg Berry, Skylar Wetzel, Dave Merrill, and Donald Stead were present. Hot Springs City Administrator Jacqueline Kelsey and myself. Jason reported that the- Jason reported that the course is doing well coming out of winter. Animal waste is still on the area of hole number six. Temperatures need to increase before we see some of that waste disappear. We do have a little damage on the greens, but no repair work will be done due to how small the damage is. The tees are showing the most damage coming out of winter. Number five tee box is doing well, but a little bumpy. Last fall, they stripped and leveled it. Number six middle tee box renovation needs sod. And one of the travel training requests you approved was to go down to Denver and get that, some of that sod. So that's why that travel training request was, was approved. They're in the process of trying to get permission to pick up low mow Kentucky bluegrass from Colorado sod farm. We're also looking at adding an irrigation head on number eight tee to help with distribution and uniformity of the irrigation system. Fairway areas that are thin have been seeded. They've mowed twice so far on fairways and haven't really cut very much. Urban burns from wildlife, urine burns from wildlife can be found throughout the course, but there's no major damage that really doesn't call for more than just a little heat so the grass can repair itself. Bunkers could use a little improvement, but we're trying to spruce them up the best way that we can by edging a few where the grass is encroached and by pushing back up the sand that has settled. Irrigation supplies have been ordered to restock the inventory and to keep the irrigation running smoothly. Jill reported that currently we have 134 season pass holders. Jill suspects that number will increase as the snowbirds come back. Last year, we had a total of 201 pass holders. Jill's state of the tournament has been, tournament schedule has been updated. There were two tournaments that require extra carts to be brought in. Jill has informed the group that the scorecards will be redone this season with changes being made from some of the suggestions that she has received. Jill also reported that for 2024, the Southern Hills Golf Course had a total of 13,908 rounds for the entire year. Currently to date, we have 397 rounds. Last year at this time, we had 605 rounds, but the golf season started a couple of weeks earlier. Firefighters Tournament has requested a food truck to be located on-site during their tournament. In old business, Jason updated the committee on the new tee markers that Hot Springs High School was going to make. At this time, there's been no information from the school that indicates when these will be done or if they will be done. Jason asked if the row, rough mow lines that were pushed back in 2024 should continue to be mowed for 2025. These areas were pushed back to help speed up play, but due to no irrigation and a significantly dry year, the appearance of these areas became a question. It was decided for 2025 not to keep these areas mowed, but to allow them to grow to natural height. New business, Jason asked for any 2026 project ideas, but also keep in mind that Jill and Jason have been instructed to understand the needs and the wants of their department. There was some discussion on changing some sort, charging some sort of a fee for the extra carts brought in during tournaments. The fee would be similar to a trail fee that Southern Hills Golf Course currently charges for people bringing in their own carts. The committee discussed a letter submitted to Jason from the public. Jason said he wasn't sure he understood what was meant by the letter and what to do with it. Jill addressed one of the questions and comments by informing the committee that ladies, that the ladies league is done by tee times and that due to the nature of the league, it seemed to be the most appropriate method. The next meeting will be the second Monday in May, 6 o'clock at the clubhouse. Any questions? City Administrator Report, Jacqueline, do you have anything for us?
I do, I have a couple of things. I'm trying to pull it up right now. This doesn't want to work. Okay, here we go. I'm sorry. My thing is frozen now. All right, well, I mean, I have to just try to remember what, what I had. So first of all, I wanted to thank you for approving my travel training request. So unfortunately, so on May 20, on March 27th, I had submitted a, here we go, got it, okay. On, on March 27th, I submitted an application to AmeriCorps N C C C. This application was for a team to come to Hot Springs to help with the cleanup along Fall River. This application requested the cleanup of over 7,500 feet from the Braun Bridge to Hummer Park. On Wednesday, April 16th, I received an email from an AmeriCorps representative stating that in compliance with Executive Order 14222, AmeriCorps is working within new operational parameters that impact the program's ability to sustain operations. As a result, AmeriCorps is pausing acceptance of new applications for this year. In reference to the recommendation that came from Public Works on 7 April, at the 7 April Council Meeting, it has been decided that the recommendation for waiving the late fees of 8:41 Almond Street will not come before council for further review or consideration. City Ordinance 51.08 referencing delinquent bills and late fees is not being considered for review. In your folders are the proposed changes to City Ordinance 155.051. These changes are being proposed to better support our businesses. As a reminder, these updates still do not allow for banner flags or other signs to be placed in the bump outs or in any other space that violates our encouragement agreement with S D D O T. Please let me know if you have any questions about these proposed changes. Just wanted to shout out a job well done to our streets and maintenance team for getting the safety fence installed by the Springs Lodge. The crew worked quickly and diligently on this project promoting safety within our community. And then, as was mentioned, it's the Admin Finance Committee Report. This week is National Work Zone Awareness Week. If you feel compelled, wear orange tomorrow, Wednesday, April 23rd to show support for our local employees and promote work zone safety. Thank you.
Any questions for Jacqueline?
Yeah, Jacqueline, where exactly was the bump out thing you were talking about in here?
Um.
I did, I read through it and I didn't see it unless I just missed it.
As a reminder, these updates still do not allow for banner flags or other signs to be placed in the bump outs. So in this version that was in your packets, there, there was no mention of the bump outs, but we did specify it in the, the version that we'll be going to, planning and zoning for the hearing in May.
And the reason why I brought that up is because at one of our Parks and Rec Meeting, Keep Hot Springs Beautiful had talked about that. So I just want the general public to know why that was in, that question was out there. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you. Ariel, any update from the Finance Office?
I don't think so.
All right, thank you. Mayor's Report, the, the only thing that I'll mention tonight is, it was mentioned earlier that for the elections, Ward one is the only one that's actually having an election. The other two wards, two, or three and four, present council members were the only ones that took out petitions for that. So Ward two will be the only ward that we need to fill a vacancy. So for any residents in Ward two, if you're interested in serving on City Council, doing some civic duty for the next year, please let City Hall know. You can email me, you can email Jacqueline your interest and a little resume of why you would like to serve as the Ward Two Representative for one year. That's all I have for you. Any questions? Going to get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion?
That's fast, isn't it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you.